Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our November Board meeting for the trustees. We're going to start out this evening with a budget hearing specific to looking at the 2024 operations budget. There is a sign up sheet that we've declared that you're here to speak later, so thank you for that. This evening is a public hearing on revenue sources for the Kitsap County Rural Library District's preliminary 2024 operating budget per RCW 8455, which states, "A taxing district other than the state that collects regular levies shall hold a public hearing on revenue sources for the district's following year's operations expense budget." The hearing must include consideration of possible increases in property tax revenues and shall be held prior to the time the taxing district levies the taxes or makes the request to have the taxes levied. As part of this hearing this evening, Dan Baer, our Deputy Director and Chief Financial and Operating Officer, will make a brief presentation on Kitsap Regional Library's revenue sources for 2024. At the conclusion, we would have taken public comment. Doesn't appear that we have any with us this evening, but with that, Dan, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. The 2024 draft operating budget is presented to the Library Board this month for your review. By state law, the library must adopt a resolution authorizing property tax increases in terms of dollars and percent increase from the previous year to comply with RCW 84.55.010 and submit a tax certification letter to the county assessor by the end of November requesting the adopted levy amount to be collected on behalf of the library. The Kitsap County Rural Library District is a junior taxing district and depends on approximately $17 million in annual property tax revenue to fund over 95% of its ongoing operations. For 2024, a tax rate of $0.27 per $1,000 of assessed property value generates this revenue. This funding is limited by Washington State law to a 1% annual increase and is capped at $0.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. After factoring in taxes from new construction revenue, tax refunds, canceled taxes, our total tax revenue will increase by approximately 422,000 or 2.5% in 2024. The 2024 operating budget matches recurring and predictable revenue sources with the ongoing costs of operating the library. Savings accrued from previous used operations are not considered sustainable or recurring revenue resources since future amounts are unpredictable. These past few budget years have been anything but normal with higher-than-average savings being accrued. This temporary increase is partly a result of lower service levels and corresponding staffing levels. Funding ongoing operations with this unpredictable revenue source is not a viable or sustainable funding model. 2024 increases in operating expenditures are mainly limited to compensation and materials. Most staff will receive a 3% increase on their hiring anniversary date along with a 2% COLA in 2024. An inflationary increase of around $31,000 is also added to the materials budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Are you here this evening for public comment related to the budget?
I'd like to schedule a public comment.
Excuse me?
I would like to schedule a public comment.
Are you here for the hearing on the 2024 budget, or is it a general comment separate from the budget?
Any section I can talk is general.
Is it specific? So it's general? You're looking for a general opportunity?
Yeah, just want to say that's a general opportunity.
Okay.
Because we have been trying to contact, like the collective has been trying to contact the library, the union, Ms. Jeffries, and then we have a busy, very busy response, so I'm here today.
Okay. So the first thing we're going to ask you to do is to go sign in on the sign in sheet?
Where is the sign in sheet?
Okay. If you're not here to specifically speak to the budget, then we're going to move through the hearing and open up. We're not yet in our regular meeting. Where's Tammy?
So even though we started at the regular meeting time, we're in a special session to do a budget hearing, and then the meeting will follow right after that.
Okay, at what time is that going to be?
It's happening sequentially, but we'll ask you to go ahead and sign in for the public comment. Oh, you have to take it. Oh, you're bringing it. Thanks, Tammy. Okay. So given that there is nobody wishing--
Where's the sheet? Because there's no sheet.
Here it is.
Oh, it's here, so okay.
Given that there is no one wishing to speak specific--
Yeah, it's a problem that the library has right here.
Excuse me. Let us please finish the hearing.
Why, of course, I'm here as a private citizen.
Given that there are no persons wishing to speak to the issue on the public hearing related to the preliminary look at the 2024 operating budget, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we are now going to officially open our regular meeting for November 28. So with that, I'm going to call to order the regular monthly meeting, starting with the reading of the mission statement, which it's my turn this time around, inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more. With that, Jason, would you like to please make introductions?
I would, after I can get my mic on. Welcome this evening. I will introduce my trustee leadership team, and I'll start on the other side of the room, and I'll flip it up today. And first of all, Director of IT and Facilities, Mike Rose, is not here. He's excused. Director of Human Resources and DEI, Lucretia Robertson. Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeanne Allen. Executive Director of Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle. Thank you and welcome. And then Deputy Director of Finance and Operations is Dan Baer, right next to me. And passing out materials is Tammy Jeffries, Executive Assistant. And last but not least, our Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson. We have no guests presenting tonight, and welcome, everybody.
Thank you, Jason. I was remiss. We actually have a full complement of trustees here this evening, including Eric Siznick, Marwan Kamera, Gina Steiner, Eric Fawn, and myself, Stephanie George. With that, we're going to move to, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, great. Hearing none. This is now the section that we will hear public comment. Per our public engagement board policy, this is the time on our agenda when we are open to hearing public comments. Speakers are asked to follow the public comment board guidelines. If you wish to speak in person, we've actually asked you to sign up, which we've done, and we will take you in the order of the sign up sheet. So prior to asking for those who have come here this evening to speak to public comment, we do have one written public comment that is included in the trustee packet and available for public viewing. So with that, Kathy, I'd like to invite you to join us this evening and make your public comment. You have three minutes.
I'd like to talk about the public room--
One second, Kathy. Can you step up to the microphone, just so we can catch it on?
My name's Kathy Candery, and I'd like to speak about the public room at the Polesbo Library. That room was designed and built as a standalone space for communities' meetings, and it is separate to the library itself. It is secure from the library itself. It has separate keys. We have met, our group has met in that room for a long time, and then when COVID came, everything was shut down, and we went back to try to get the room again for our meetings, our regular monthly meetings. We were told that you guys weren't doing that anymore. So I would, I think it would be a wonderful thing if we could use that room again. I would like to know if there's any, anything we can do. I mean, we were trustworthy. They gave us the keys. We locked everything up. We kept it nice and tidy. There was never, we never heard any issues with it. When I asked, they said that your basic thing was that nobody could be on the campus if the library wasn't open. That room was designed to be able to be used when the library wasn't open. So I would like to encourage you to consider allowing it to be used as a public space even though, even when the library isn't open. Does anybody have any questions or any more information that you can give me or I can give you or anything?
Appreciate that. Thank you. Do you, does anybody have a question for Kathy? I will say that in this section, it's not certainly a time to ask questions of Kathy. This public comment section is not set up as a dialogue, per se, but we appreciate the information that you've provided. Do any of the trustees have further questions of Kathy's that we might take into deliberation later? No, great. I want to, Kathy, I want to thank you for making the time and the commitment to come down here and present the comment, along with your, there was another public comment similarly, to make that need known to the trustees.
Will somebody get back to me with some, I mean, if there's no dialogue here, will there be something somewhere down the road?
In fact, you know what I'm going to have you do is, if you'd like us particularly, is either an email address or an address so that we can--
I can do--
Or a phone number. That'd be awesome.
I can, I can do any or all of those. So, okay. I'll take it over here and give it back.
Thank you. Oh, actually, you have the next gentleman's name. I'm going to take the--
Everybody is supposed to--
Yes. We're ready for you if you'd like to make your public comment.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you have a translator available?
Sorry?
Do you have a translator available from, like, for example, North Kitsap? If you're going to talk to the board, they have a translator available, no? So I'm going to have my message in Spanish, and then you can later contact someone and then say whatever. So, hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es José Castro, y yo soy Era. I really do not know my status with the library because the press and here, Lucretia, and many people from the library has not given me a response from my letter directly to me, even I sent to emails.
Is this a personnel issue?
Yes.
Is this on a matter related to a personnel issue? Because that does not qualify--
No, it's not a personnel issue.
Is this about a personnel issue, a specific staff issue?
I don't know, but I can tell the, my speech, and then you can tell me if that's like a personal--
We do not take public comment on any matter specific to personnel, to an individual staff person.
Okay. I'm not talking, I'm not going to talk about no one specific. Yo voy a hablar solamente de problema de comunicación que tiene la biblioteca. I'm going to talk about the communications issue that are in the library. Is that something I can talk about?
If you, you've got two minutes to address the communication.
Okay. My problema, nada, simplemente yo quería dejar saber que el 3 de octubre del año 2003--
I'm wondering, but--
Okay. If the, if the board cannot hear or stay whatever I'm going to say, I'm not going to say nothing wrong, like, I don't know what's the issue here. No, I cannot speak in English. I want to say it in Spanish because it's something that I think I can express better in my mother language. Is that okay? Okay. Muchas gracias. So, voy a empezar. I'm going to start again, so please start counting my time again at three. So, mi nombre es José Castro. Soy residente of Bremerton. I'm not sure if I am an employee of the library or if I am a private citizen. That's what I want to say on the matters of, on how I am expressing today to you guys. Pero el 3 de octubre, la biblioteca me despidió justificadamente. Luego de, yo he enviado dos emails en donde expresé primero que había renunciado y luego de que yo quité mi renuncia porque recibí una respuesta de recursos humanos diciendo que no debía renunciar y que lo considerara. Lo hice, y la biblioteca nunca me dio una respuesta. Tuve que llamar a la unión para que la unión me representara, y todavía no he escuchado una respuesta de la biblioteca sobre qué es lo que me está sucediendo o cuál es mi estatus con la biblioteca. Y eso para mí es muy triste porque yo pensaba que la biblioteca era un lugar en donde uno podía hablar transparentemente, y uno como empleado podía simplemente lograr que uno fuera escuchado en un ambiente de diversidad, equidad, e inclusión, cosa que no sucede. Y nada, pues yo estoy aquí hoy para presentarle a la junta y dejarle saber que el colectivo latino ha escrito varias cartas a la junta, que él ha escrito cartas a la administración, y que él ha escrito cartas a diversas personas dentro de la biblioteca, y no ha escuchado respuestas en lo absoluto. Yo estoy aquí respectfully asking you guys that can you take seriously the matter that many people have written to the library? I think that Gina got a letter today to your email coming from Alejandra and the collective. And then now you get it there. It's not a personal issue. You can say whatever you want, Jason, but you are also implicated in this matter, Lucretia, Burindelli, and everyone else. Muchas gracias a todos, and have a good night.
Okay. I'm sorry. We need to ask you to stop. You actually are bringing--
No, I just stopped before you say--
I see you're done.
Yeah, no, I'm done, and I hope that Lucretia, Bur, and everybody resigns. The library needs new leadership.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to, Kathy, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, or I can take that from you, so if you'd like to leave, you don't feel like you have to wait. Okay. We'd love that. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Included in this month's consent agenda are the minutes of the October 24, 2023 regular meeting, as well as our standard payment of October 2023 bills, which includes payroll and benefits, and blanket voucher bills, as well as the library materials that are being withdrawn from the collection to be declared surplus in October, which was 3,302 items. Are any of these items something you'd wish to call out separately? If not, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I shall move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Consent agenda passes.
Can we, can we pause for a minute, Stephanie? We had, Gina had something that we wanted to clarify. There was the--
Written public comment?
Do we need to read this, or is--
We don't, we just accept it because with the new, thanks, Gina, with the new, with the new board engagement policy, the written policy just goes completely into the record. And, and just Kathy, I mean, that public comment really echoes the same issue that Kathy came here to speak to as well, so. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Next, we're moving on to board reports. So Eric Siznick, would you like to start?
I don't have any report this month.
Great. Marwan?
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all here. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. I just wanted to let folks know that the severe weather shelters have been activated. They've been activated for a few days. They're open tonight, and so a lot of our folks need to be housed when the weather dips and just to be cognizant that that's happening. And we just want to get the word out, and folks can call 211 to get transportation. And those shelters are throughout the county, in Bainbridge, Polesbo, Port Orchard, and here in Bremerton. So I just wanted to inform everyone of that.
Thank you. Gina?
I don't have much to report, except for when I feel a little bit of guilty as a board member and not being a working board member, then my donations go up. So I've made two donations to the library since I was last here, so.
That's why I have to report. It's just like Rotary. When you don't come, you have to write checks. So, all right. Thanks, Gina.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the annual retreat for the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, where we celebrated achieving 100% board participation in the Port Orchard capital campaign, so very exciting there. Also spent the retreat reflecting on the performance of the foundation in 2023 and discussed next steps for an updated strategic plan.
Great. Thank you. My activity this month included being present with Jason and Dan, as well as our new staff person in the finance, Mary Jean Myers, to take part in really the opening conference to a fun audit, the Office of State Auditors annually. I don't know if they do it annually, but periodically they get to visit, and they are doing a dual audit. One is both accountability as it relates to how we comply with state laws, policies, and procedures as it relates to public funds, as well as the financial portion of it, which is to provide an opinion on the statements that they're free from material misstatements. And the period in which we're being reviewed is January 1 through December 31. I noted this in our opening session, what's really phenomenal, I think, about this experience is the degree to which the state auditor's office actually goes to make you feel like this is in partnership. It's a very collaborative process. It's a very informed process about how it's going to go and what's going to happen and what the intervals are along the way. So it's actually quite a positive experience. I don't know, Dan, if you want to provide a quick little update as to where we're at in that audit as of the moment?
Right now, we are responding to questions for sample audits of our expenditures and talking about different internal controls that we have in place.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. So that is my report, which leads us then next straight into the Finance Committee report. Eric, you want to take that?
Yes, thank you. From our Finance Committee meeting, we remain on target with fiscal projections and plan, but remain cautious based on the unpredictable nature of revenue and the economy, and we continue to maintain a conservative approach. We're also anticipating final payment to Central Kitsap School District for the new Silverdale Library. Very exciting. We also discussed logistics for reviewing and approving the 2024 budget, as well as potential opportunities for new revenue in the future.
Great. Thank you. Next item is a financial report from Dan Baer.
Thank you. Eric, thank you for those kind words and the great report on our financial report. And I don't really have anything to add to it as we get to the end of the year here, but entertain questions if anyone has any questions for me.
No questions? Good.
Okay.
I like a financial report where there are no questions.
Thank you.
And again, it's not because people aren't paying attention, it's that we get such well-documented financial statements that if you have a question, it's actually answered in the package we get. So thank you for that, Dan. Jason, Library Director's Report.
Good evening again, and it's from our port. I'm going to start with our October 19th, the library held its first in-person, all-staffed day in like three years at the Marvin Williams Center in Bremerton. Some of our board members were there. Thank you for showing up. It was a great day. We had, the theme was Evolve and Elevate, and it was a moving documentary and keynote speech from Gina Corpus, who's a member of the Indipino community in Bainbridge Island. Staff were treated to breakfast, lunch, and provided opportunities to connect with their teammates and staff from other locations. Breakout sessions featured benefits, fair, session on leaning into conflict, introduction of language access, our very own background, Superstars, Facilities. That was one of our highlights of our breakout sessions. And then our first-ever unconference, where staff were able to engage in peer-to-peer learning by showcasing their talents in gardening, fiber, outdoor exploring, tabletop gaming, and the like. Late in the afternoon, we recognized our continuous service recognition, and that was highlighted by Bainbridge Island's Public Services Supervisor, Wendy Westerland, who has 15 years of service with the libraries. Facilities Coordinator, Jada French, who has 20 years with the library, and then Sylvan Way Library Associate, Lynn Stone, with 25 years of service. So we certainly congratulate all those who also garnered five, 10 years of service as well. And then we also celebrated our annual staff awards with our Library Superstar being awarded to graphic designer, Tara Tapia. The Star Team was awarded to downtown Bremerton team. The Rory Bradley Award was awarded to Silverdale Library Associate, Lynn Gleason, and the Fund Fresh and Fearless Award, which is a personal award from the library director, but with help from a leadership team, we selected East La Soto, who's a youth services librarian at Bainbridge Island. October featured from our safety team, a earthquake preparedness, which I'm learning, certainly learning all about, living in this part of the country. I've heard enough about the Cascadian Fault line. I think at my first actual meeting with leadership team, I learned all about that from leadership, so. And then we excitedly rolled out our new printing system to the public in October, and that was led by Director of IT and Facilities Management, Mike Rose, and Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson. And Shannon, you want to elaborate a little bit on what that process has been like and what the reception has been from the public and staff?
Absolutely. Thank you. So just to kind of reiterate our wish list going into this, because I'm continuing the advocacy of how awesome this is for our patrons, we wanted three major things with this. One was remote printing, so--
Check.
--being able to print from your own device, whether at home or in the library. We wanted it to be able to allow a certain credit level for patrons so that we could continue what we've been doing during the pandemic with some kind of baseline level of free printing and copying. If you just need to run in and print your boarding pass or a school assignment, let's make it as easy and barrier-free as possible. And we also wanted patrons to be empowered to manage as much as possible on their own so that staff weren't having to kind of be the gatekeepers for all the things. So TBS has been this magical system. It's actually two separate systems for our computer reservation and printing copying. And we set it up as closely as possible to the configurations that we had with our old system to make the transition as smooth as we could, and with the idea that we would kind of add as we went. And, and we went for it. With a system like this, it's sort of a situation where until there's data in the system and until you see how people are using and interacting with it, you don't know what you don't know. So it was a little bit nerve-wracking getting going for all of us, but it's been a really pretty smooth transition. We've had a couple of little hiccups and some configurations that we want to tweak a little bit, but it's, it's been fairly seamless, and we've just, you know, haven't heard a lot from staff, which is exactly what you want for an IT product, right? It's working. Yay. So I just want to give a huge shout out, though. I think a lot of that success is Tina Moore in IT. She helped kind of build it and get us started and configure everything. But Robyn Dai in IT, she's our systems administrator, and Jillian English, who is a downtown Bremerton Public Services Supervisor, went branch to branch, and they were really the connective tissue. So each day, you know, our TBS trainers would go to a new branch, Jillian would follow because she was able to kind of hear what questions had come up, the-- the day before and really prepare staff with a public services mindset of like, here's what's going to come. And just having that bandwidth for her to be able to engage in that way with the DB closure was incredible. So I'm just so grateful that she was willing to do that. And I think it was a huge, huge help for staff.
Thanks, Shannon. Me and Shannon sat through training. I remember the day after, or day of installation in Sylvan Way. And I would agree, just the work that both Tina and Robyn and Jillian put into making sure that not only training was happening, but to have training documents that people could refer to. And certainly enough, we achieved all three goals that we set out to do. So I really want to thank all the staff for their input in that. And other news regarding facilities, at least, well, before I get to that, in October, we also spent a considerable time, under the leadership of Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeannie Allen, polishing up our strategic plan, which you all have, both in your packets and at your tables here. And we'll go through that later. But essentially, we feel that this version essentially represents more of what we think to be the finished product. Staff have already seen the preview, and we've workshopped these concepts, especially around our mission, vision, and values during our all-staff day this past year. So we've presented this plan to you for feedback, and Jeannie will discuss that a little later on the agenda. But in facilities and other public services news, the city of Bremerton has finally finished work on the HVAC system of the Downtown Bremerton location. Yay! So we are closer to actually reopening the branch. There's still a little bit of work to do in order to get to reopening. But as you can imagine, with a project like this and a, you know, works-progress administration building that, you know, dates back a number of years, there's a lot of work to do when you do some HVAC work and, you know, trying to peel back layers of walls and that sort of thing. And so I want to let Shannon tell you a little bit about how staff's preparing for reopening and what that timeline might look like. We're a little ways off from doing that, but Shannon?
Yeah, and, you know, I know HVAC system upgrade probably sounds like the least exciting thing in the world. But for DB, this is going to be a true game changer. I'm sure Marwan knows this. Every time the temperature crept up in the summer, we would all start looking at our phones and think about, oh, gosh, how long are we going to be able to stay open today? Same thing in the winter. It's just been, it's been a tough road for years and a dream for years to get this, to get this off the ground. I'm so grateful for the city, to the city for their partnership on this. It's going to be huge for our patrons. So yeah, staff, our staff are now back in the building this week. We have some new faces we're really excited to bring onboard at Bremerton, and we're doing a little bit more hiring. So that's really, really exciting with a small team. One or two face changes is a big deal. We are working with, of course, facilities closely, getting things, all the, they've done quite a bit of wiring work and work to kind of reconfigure some of our spaces. Our partners in the Collection and Technical Services Department are doing huge kind of restructure of where the collections live. Communications is working on new wayfinding and signage. So all the things are happening. It's a scurry this week. And we're really looking forward to being able to open by mid-month. We haven't announced a specific date yet, just until we have a firmer sense of all the things on the task list getting done in the way that we hoped. But we're really, really excited to reopen right around the corner.
Thanks, Shannon. Yeah, we're really excited. We know our public is excited as well. It's been too long, but as Shannon talked about, at least no closures in the winter and summer like clockwork like we've had. You know, typically when temperatures are at the extremes, we have to close that facility. And a lot of people depend, not only on Downtown Bremerton, obviously, but all of our locations for, you know, all the things that they depend on libraries for. So it'll be really exciting to get Downtown Bremerton back in operation. And speaking of Downtown Bremerton, through the course of my directorship here, which has gone on two years, as I've, you know, traveled the community, I've talked to quite a number of people about the history of our library in general, and specifically the history of Downtown Bremerton. As you know, this is a historic art deco building. And from our archival records and like firsthand accounts, talking with folks, we've learned that this building was actually dedicated years ago to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And in fact, in digging through archives, which had a lot of help and were folks in this room, one of the things that came to my attention is that, you know, we designated and participated in a naming ceremony back in 1999. And the planning at least goes back to 1998, if not before that, when NAACP petitioned the city. The Bremerton chapter of the NAACP petitioned the City of Bremerton to reflect the name of the building to be the Martin Luther King Jr. Building. As you know, the City of Bremerton owns that particular building, and they followed suit. And so although the building was renamed the Martin Luther King Jr. Building, the library had not affixed its name to the library in that regard. And so what's, you know, what's really apparent to me is that we want to make right the intentions of those who advocated for the honor in the first place. And that is to officially rename Downtown Bremerton Library to honorifically reflect the man whose name already, you know, is on the building facade and is thoroughly represented in the building by way of pictures, plaques, and regard. So we feel that, you know, the life and the reason why we'd like to reflect the name is not only to honor the work of community leaders who've gone before us and who fought to have this name represented on the building, but we feel like Dr. King specifically exemplifies what libraries are all about and embodies all that we stand for as an organization. You know, the library is a burial-less institution that seeks to give all individuals, regardless of their background, socioeconomic status, race, identity, political affiliation, sexual orientation, and the like, to be welcome in its halls, you know, to be welcome, to, you know, welcome all those curious souls who are through the doors to be able to search for knowledge and to be able to, you know, seek a better way of life and wonderment and the path to become more enlightened. We feel like Dr. King represents that. And we'd like to pay homage to Dr. King and to honor, you know, the work that community members have really strove for having the building be recognized as such. Once we are able to get back into the building, obviously, and to restart, we feel that a timely recognition would be in honor of Dr. King's birthly, which happens. Interestingly, when the building was renamed Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I don't know the exact name of the building with the City of Bremerton. We will pull that from City Hall, and I think we have someone checking on that. But the, the building was renamed on January 15, 1999. We would like to eventually come close to re honoring Dr. King with his name affixed to Downtown Bremerton Branch Library in roughly January of 2024. And so with that, that is my report. I'd like to entertain any questions from anyone.
I don't have a question, just really excited about all the different things you spoke about. You know, I'm a big fan of the printers and having the access. But one thing that I forgot to say during my, my time to speak was just acknowledging Lisa Luciga. For the last two years, she has been on the leadership team for the Kitsap Housing and Homeless Coalitioners. She's stepping down, and she's just done a phenomenal job over the last two years. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Jason. Next item on the agenda is correspondence, but with the new public engagement policy, that's been condensed into public comments, so we'll move to old business. The next agenda item is related to the security camera library draft policy. This is the second reading. This item was tabled from the October 24 regular board meeting. And there's a note that the policy name has since been changed since then. Jason, do you want to set this up or?
Yeah, I can set it up. My, we withheld this policy last month due to us wanting to have adequate time to respond to feedback from our union partners regarding some language in the policy and some really procedural issues regarding the policy. We've since had our policy review team, thank you, policy review team, who's sitting in this room. That would be Jeannie, Lucretia, and Shannon. We've had, since had the policy review team make some revisions to that policy that addressed those concerns. And we're now asking the Board of Trustees for approval of this, now what's called the Security Camera Library Policy. So just for review, the camera, Security Camera Policy was first brought to the board in August. It had gone through legal review prior to getting to the board. Its real purpose is to provide a policy on how cameras are used to protect people, assets, and monitor conditions on all of our properties and the properties that we lease or rent. And so having said that, we've made the necessary corrections, or not corrections, we made the necessary amendments to the policy that we thought were important for our union partners. And we're now bringing that policy back for approval. And I would ask the Board of Trustees to consider the security library, the Security Camera Policy for approval. It's a mouthful, sorry.
It's a mouth, it's a mouthful. Given that introduction, are there any questions or comments on this particular requested?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate the updates and being able to see, track changes. I like the updates. I think they make sense, so changes look good to me.
Thanks.
I agree with your comment, Eric. It looks good to me.
Okay. Certainly, we'll take a motion to approve the Security Camera Library Policy.
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Just go down the line. Further questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor to approve the Security Camera Library Policy as revised? Please say aye.
Aye.
Great. I keep going back and forth between being able to see Kathy or not and being able to read here all at once. Our next item on the agenda is also a deferred action. This was presented initially last month as the naming library policy procedures. We deferred to act on that as presented last month, in part procedurally, because we really want to make a practice of taking policies through the trustees for first reading, get some great context from staff or others in the room, and then be able to bring them back a second time once the public has had a chance also to weigh in so that we can have further discussion and move these through. This was a good example of that because subsequent to the meeting, I had my own reflections and have really advanced a significant revision for the policy for my fellow colleagues to consider, in part because I think, and this is relatively new, to distinguish between really true board policies and those that are library operations policies. There won't be a lot of truly specific board-level policies. And in fact, we approve all policies within the library. But in this particular case, because the policy really places the sole responsibility and ownership, if you will, on the trustees to approve naming, then it felt like this was an appropriate opportunity to elevate this to a board policy. And second to that, to similarly consider that there would be guidelines, because they would be guidelines in helping to guide these decisions as they come further down the path, both in terms of guiding the staff, but also guiding the board to take on consideration in the future. So that was one of the rationales in terms of bringing this back and having it renamed as a, as a board policy. Further, there were content issues. And I think part of what we see in this particular is if you look back at the original policy, it was really very specific to naming a library, naming a facility. And the reality is, is we really have evolved down this path further and also recognize that not only might we have opportunity to consider commemorative, honorific naming, as Jason is suggesting, for the Downtown Bremerton branch, but truly as we move forward, there is opportunity to consider naming both of facilities, but also within facilities around capital campaigns, particularly because there isn't really any clear pathway, if you will, for capital funding for the library. So in that light, I am proposing that we relook at this and really in two levels, that tonight, we're going to take a second look at the policy, which really sort of elevates a broader umbrella of what's the philosophical presentation under which we would consider naming. And then also then take some time to look at guidelines as they've been recrafted for decision in December, again, so that we can, A, allow us to have some context to go back and look at those to provide feedback, but also to allow the staff to do the same thing, which is to provide valuable feedback that we can approve documents that we can then make sure that we can manage when we go forward. So given that, walking through the policy in terms of the broader policy, honestly, one, we wanted to broaden it, just really to put it in more of a commemorative situation for naming in general for the library, because naming doesn't just exist to the exterior building, particularly as we've become more advanced in utilizing philanthropy. There are other opportunities that really relate to naming that need to be kind of considered into the broader policy. But also then, how are we going to provide guidelines to administer those? So what this policy does, it's different, is it really provides a broader umbrella. It also basically puts an umbrella over the fact that the board actually has responsibility for naming, but some of that responsibility, it will choose to delegate under certain conditions to the, to the staff, if you will. The other thing is, is we just went through the process as we were going through the strategic framework. And as part of that, looking at updating the MOA between the library district and the foundation board, we actually encompassed in that particular document that we recognized that there was a partnership between the library Board of Trustees, as well as the foundation Board of Directors. And we wanted to see that partnership reflected in this policy as well, including, Eric asked me earlier, what did this mean specifically as it comes to branch naming, when in fact, many of our facilities actually have other building owners? So how did we make provisions for that as well? It also then identifies, under what considerations would we kind of approve naming as a package, as opposed to an individual discreet consideration? So the two things that we've called out in this policy that would call for discreet individual consideration would certainly be the naming or the rescinding of a name on a branch, as well as some potential future opportunity, like hospitals and universities get, or in fact, there could be an exceptional endowment request made that falls outside of just standard bread and butter endowment opportunities. So under those discreet positions, we would view those as extraordinary and take them up separately. Otherwise, we would be looking at naming probably in a package as it relates to interior and exterior spaces as part of a capital campaign. And it also then makes the provision that, along with approving naming, the board has the right to rescind naming. Under what conditions would we do that? And recognize that any considerations that we make around naming are, in fact, extraordinary, particularly if they're having to do with facilities. We're not going to get many opportunities to make that decision. That means we need to do the due diligence and make that decision with a great deal of care in terms of the present moment we're making that decision, but as well as its long-term impact on the library, as well as just the positive, you know, intent and ramifications as it goes is that correlates to the mission. So with that, I will open this up for just questions or comments as it relates to the policy, or even if something's in the guidelines, and then we can consider if we're ready to actually take formal action on the policy and consider the guidelines next time.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate you bringing your, your wealth of knowledge and expertise to crafting the policy. I liked the approach. I thought it provided the right kind of guardrails without being too prescriptive or restrictive. So I really liked the approach. So I really liked the approach and looking forward to feedback from others.
I'm just looking down the line.
Well, I'd like the chance to talk us over with our Friends group in Manchester, anyway. We just got done building an addition, and we didn't name anything, but I know that the subject came up, because we don't have our own naming policy. So I'd like to talk it over with them and maybe approve it next month.
So I think, Eric, and you might want to speak to specific questions, because the overall, the detail you're concerned about is probably in the guidelines, right? Is really, so the reference here is specific to the Manchester Friends of the Library, which in this case, they own the building. And so in those situations, if we were to consider naming, we would then also want to include that building owner as part of that discussion, as we moved any of those opportunities forward. And I think that's part of the point we're making here, too, is we have these other stakeholders that are really important in these partnerships and need to take that into account and take that, just take that into account as we're making these decisions. So I'm wondering, Eric, if that holds up the policy in your mind, or is it really the guidelines you would like greater feedback from the Friends?
I didn't get a chance to talk to them last month, and I think they just like to have a little warning of what's coming. We haven't talked to them yet about this, so that's all I'm thinking about. If it just, bum gets it like that, then somebody could take offense, and that's all I'm thinking about.
Yeah, okay. And Eric, you have similar considerations, I would imagine.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Any further comments, feedback, concerns?
So as a practical matter, your question is, does it, and maybe this is where we need your advice, Jason, is does the, can we consider the policy without the guidelines, or is it a package deal?
Normally, you would want both of them, especially if you're planning to implement right away, considering that this is a board policy and one that would be used not necessarily for the purpose of operations, but for naming opportunities, whether honorific or through the foundation. I think the guidelines are important. It's just a matter of, should they be passed together? Probably.
Yeah, so, thanks.
Yeah.
That's where I was looking at. Thank you.
So the only other timing consideration is, and so, and this provides great timing, is in December, then, we will likely be doing multiple things at once, in terms of both moving, you know, approving policy-related guidelines, but you're also going to have to bring forward a formal, because part of what the process calls for is a formal consideration for the honorific naming that you're advancing for Birmerton.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct. We'll have a pretty dense meeting, unfortunately, before the end of the year. We'll try to make it light.
Yeah.
But no, I really appreciate the board's feedback. I appreciate their willingness to be a working board, and, you know, I can't stress that enough. Typically, the boards that I've been on in my life, and I've been on many, have been really, and they've been, they've varied, right? But I appreciate that this board is willing to dig in and actually work versus just coming to, you know, to look good and to, you know, be a resume filler. So having said that, I really appreciate everybody's ability to collaborate and to collaborate with leadership and making sure that we're clear about our intentions, we're clear about our policies, we're clear about the effect of them and what it means for the library long-term, because that's what this is really about, is setting up the library to have policies and procedures in place that are smart business decisions for the library that will long outlive us. And so I just wanted to say that. And, you know, there's no pressure to pass anything, you know, for timeliness reasons. I believe that they'll pass when they're supposed to pass. The process is more important than, I think, passing the policy. Make sure there's a clear understanding and there's a clear lane for feedback, not only from our public, who often is our staff and the actual public, but also to our working public here, to make sure that we're all comfortable. So thank you.
Yeah.
We'll get to it next month, and we'll make it happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Eric, for bringing that up. We actually crafted for it, but didn't think about it in practical application, like, it'd be good to take that out, so appreciate that. Great, okay. Well, moving along, this might not take as long as we need. So the next item on the agenda is the strategic plan.
Yes. So mentioned earlier, I discussed in my report, but under the leadership of Jeannie Allen, as you know, she's our resident communications and strategy expert and a lot of other things, but I think this is, we've arrived at our penultimate draft. I think next month, we should be ready pending no major hiccups. We are here. I'm going to just turn it over to Jeannie and spare you the preliminaries and let her walk through what's changed between this month and last month. So Jeannie?
Thank you. Everybody should have a copy in front of them. I think the most important thing that you're going to notice from last month's draft and this month's draft is that we've, of course, added the sparkle to this addition. So you'll see it's been fully graphic designed by our resident graphic designer, Tara Tapia, and under the leadership of Victoria Gangory, who's our marketing and communications manager. We spent a lot of time looking at strategic plans and really exploring ideas of what we wanted this to be. And for me, I really was looking for something that could inspire our staff primarily, but also our community, and serve as a document that we could reference for five years into the future. So we really wanted it to hold up to the test of time and carry everything that we needed, the strategic plan to carry, but also give it breathing room, so that you can really absorb everything that's in the plan. So we didn't intend for it to be as long as it is, but I think the graphics that are spread throughout it and the space that they've given this draft really make it a lot more comprehensive in the way that it's been designed and a lot easier to understand because of the design. So throughout, we've done small corrections, minor grammatical corrections, a few statistical facts that we double and triple check to make sure that we had them correct, and a few of them we did need to change. We've, of course, included a little bit more insight from Stephanie herself in the introduction letter. On page 11, you'll notice that the financial resiliency section has changed quite a bit. We went through and refined that a little bit more. The complexity of trying to explain our funding situation in a couple of paragraphs takes refining and refining and refining. I think we're in a pretty good place where people can understand that through what's been shared in that section. On page 26, we've streamlined the strategic goals on that page. That particular section was a little bit more dense than some of the other sections, and we were able to get that down a little bit further. And then on pages 27 and 28, we've updated that from facts and figures and text to a visual format, to just kind of illustrate the statistics of the library a little bit more. And then, of course, we've added the information about the library on the back page, as far as all of our locations and location information. So we're really happy with this draft. I've already received a few small changes from a few of our leadership teams, so there will be a couple of updates coming up. And then, of course, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it further with the board, but I think we're in a really good place, and we're really set up for a great final draft. Questions?
Thanks, Jeannie.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you for this. Looks terrific. One question, are there any stakeholders left that haven't seen this yet, or do you consider that everyone has had a go at it, that we expect to provide feedback?
Our external stakeholders, by and large, haven't seen it. We wanted this to be workshop and house first with our staff and board before we share out widely, and so, no, we have not.
Okay, thank you.
So this isn't, the format is interesting. It's beautiful, by the way. But so it's not just like a strategic plan, this is actually kind of like a report format, too, is, I guess, I'm assuming that was the intent, like something that's meant for public consumption, not just a working document for internal?
Yeah, and that's a really good point. We wanted more of a, you know, a roadmap to library success, if you will, and what our commitment is. This is more outlines our commitment to not only our staff and the public, but to the county, and it sets forth essentially what it is we need to do to achieve that. We will have internal documents that really guard our staff through their work product, you know, and so we'll be scaling this for staff consumption, to be used in staff meetings, to be used when we, you know, what Jeannie and myself will do is, we will take on the act of essentially taking this on a road with our staff. So we'll have some more consumable bites for staff to be able to lock into, how does this translate into day-to-day work for us? And quite frankly, all of our directors, too, will be responsible for implementing how to do that with their teams. And so, Jeannie, I don't know if you want to elaborate anymore. I'm sure you do.
Yes, of course I do. I guess when you get into the first section of the strategic plan, what I've always found helpful, as we've created documents for the organization, is great summaries of who we are as an organization. So the beginning of the document really summarizes who we are at this moment in time, and I think that lends a lot of support as to why we selected the goals that we did. So the beginning really sets up who we are as an organization, what kind of service we're providing right now, who we're serving, and what we see in libraries in general, and that provides the framework for the why for all of the strategic initiatives that come later in the document. And I think it's helpful to have that to reflect back on as we move through the next five years, to kind of remember why we set some of the goals that we set. And it also provides a great foundation for kind of referring back to when we're creating documents or doing other things out in the community, we can reference this and easily pull the information that we need to quickly to talk about the library, and it's all prepared in a really neat package, so.
I do have one question. I'm looking, you were just talking about the difficulty of summarizing the financial resilience in two-page, and when I look at the operating budget, one of the questions I have is, where is the staff absorbed in that? Because we know that that's a big expense for the library overall, but I don't see how it's broke down in this operating budget in this graph here. Is it administrative support and programs and services?
So typically, when we look at the operating budget, we have two different ways that we break that apart. The operating budget that we've put in the strategic plan spreads the staff across the different sections based on the areas of service. So our public services staff are in the public services section. We also have a secondary chart that we look at when we're looking at the operating budget internally, and our website, where we break it down to staff and then all of the material costs of those. So we've looked at the operating budget in two different ways.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just had three comments. One, I really do appreciate the attention to page 12. I think it's really hard to articulate how the library is funded, and that can be very difficult, so that is very easy to comprehend. Also like the fact that on 27 and 28, you have these other stats here, and they're really displayed in a way that's very readable. And the last thing I would say is, you know, these documents can be dry and really heavy, and having read through this a few times, it is very readable. You know, it makes you want to read and learn and see what the library is doing, so I just really appreciate all the work and the time and the effort that's gone into creating this.
Thank you. I think that means a lot to us. I think one of the things we talked about in doing this and looking at examples of other strategic plans, we didn't want anything that was going to be so dense, you know, you were asleep after like page three, right? And to your point, I think it's like, you know, and to Jeannie's point, really, in setting up the history and the why is important, and the setting up what kind of organization we are and what our history's been, really gets at like, here's why we are doing the things we do now. Here's the state of where the library is. Here's the state of society right now, the economy, so forth and so on, and here are our goals, and here's where this, you know, sort of meets our customer needs. So we wanted to do that in a real straightforward way, where you could really see it and you didn't have to go looking for exactly what our, you know, our objectives are and our mission is and our areas of strategic alignment. So I'm glad you found it useful and it kept you awake.
It's really pleasing. The pictures are fantastic. It's just really good, good work. Excellent.
Thank you.
I'm looking at, first of all, it was inspirational to read it, right? When you read between the lines and you get, you do get the depth and the complexity of the library. But I am looking back at that chart again, Jeannie, and wondering to follow up, I think, on what you're pointing out, and it's, because we say it in the copy on the financial resilience page, that, you know, 78% of the budget really is supporting staff, staff through wages and salaries, but is there a slight change we could make to, because part of what's happening is the staff are in that administrative support and programs and services largely, correct?
They're in every section, yeah.
They're in every, so, okay, they are.
And I think the...
So the collection staff are...
The idea behind it is the reason for the staff are those areas.
Yeah.
The staff are here to serve the community, and they serve the community in those ways.
I'm wondering if we might make, think about making some sort of statement that says that, because the first glance, when you look at that, first of all, when you see administrative support on top, nobody likes administrative, nobody likes administrative support. It's just look at that from a visual optics, again, in terms of, does it translate? Because you have to read the fine print, that so, I mean, the other thing is, is we talk about the library, but the library, so often, we talk about in this meeting, the library is our staff. The library is the people, and we have come to learn that in the position we sit in, but I'm not sure that's always translating at the deepest possible level that we want it to going forward. So I think this whole thing is just hard, given the way we're funded, but maybe looking at that again, potentially. So good. Any more comments? Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, that's a good point. Another item is, I love that there are outcomes and goals that you want to track, and I think as part of the follow-up, the maintenance of the strategic plan, to ensure that the library's putting all of its efforts towards your outlined goals, is to have kind of regular cadences over the years, understanding, number one, how are we measuring the outcomes? Where's the baseline today? And then having subsequent meetings following that, maybe annually or at whatever cadence, to ensure that we're hitting those marks. And if not, how can we support, how can we invest differently? What do we need to do to be able to hit all of these priorities that we have?
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think Jeannie's smiling over there, because we've talked about building in, you know, opportunities for checkpoints and to track milestones and so forth and so on, including, you know, how to get at what those metrics are, and are we, in fact, you know, living up to the product that we've put out? And if not, what are the steps moving forward? So Jeannie's outlined that in the past for the leadership team and has some tools to be able to do that, so we'll be working closely to really iron out what the deliverables on that look like, and we'll, you know, we'll review that during one of our strategic law range planning meetings. So thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. This has been a big process and a long push to get here, but you want to commend, Steph, want to commend also, I mean, significant portion of your work as a new library director to come to the community and the effort, as I know it's been in the past as well, but the effort to invite community input to it as well. So it's very exciting. I'm looking forward to being able to share that document with others in the community, because I think there is such good learning in it, just in general, on top of posing our strategic direction for the next five years. So good. Great. New business. First item is, this is the time of year as we look forward to the new calendar year, is putting together a nominating committee, which is always interesting, because there are five of us. And what this committee will do is to really advance or to identify and talk with individuals about... about both the two officer positions, president and vice president, which myself and Eric currently hold. By practice, we are kind of doing this annually, but by practice, because there's a learning curve, is to have the officers hold their positions for two years. So I will be cycling out after December, and Eric will be taking this seat, so we'll be looking to fill that second position as well as other committee assignments. So I've actually asked Eric to serve as the nominating designee, if you will, to then talk to each of my colleagues about their interests, either in terms of the committees or committees you want to be on or don't want to be on, and what makes sense as we think about succession planning. And so, Eric, do you want to speak to that?
I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to speaking with you. I encourage you all to, you know, let me know, be proactive if there's any role that you want to take on nominating committee or vice presidency or so forth. And we'll be in touch.
He'll be calling you soon. The next item is the preliminary 2024 operating budget. This was the same item that we had exposure to in the public hearing, but this is the first reading of this proposed 2024 operating budget for review. It's a great time, if you've had a, you know, chance and you want to ask Dan further questions while we're here. Otherwise, we will be bringing this back for approval in December. However, this is always a bit of a complex maneuver in between January and December because we see the first reading of the budget in November, we approve the budget in December, we approve a capital budget in January. However, there's a whole bunch of activity that has to happen in this meeting to really interface with the county. So now's a great time to ask Dan questions, if you've got them. Otherwise, we'll work our way through these other action items.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Dan, I noticed that there's in the 24 budget, you have zero allocated for tribal local grants and entitlements. Just because it's not something that we, isn't budgeted, that doesn't mean we won't seek funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
I just know that those are reoccurring sources, so we should maximize them to the extent that we can.
Right. And unlike a municipal government, like when I worked with the city of Seattle, we had, we had to get authority to actually receive revenue and spend it. The board here, even though we don't have anything budgeted, if we do receive that money, it's accepted automatically and it goes into our coffers. So there's, it's less hassle to do this. So absolutely, we will receive any money we get that we didn't budget for.
Okay, thanks.
Please.
Gladly receive that.
Please have some money.
Gladly receive that.
That's a good practice, Dan.
It's a great practice.
That was my.
Oh, my goodness. Any other questions for Dan? Maybe harder ones than that one? All right. Hearing none, then we will move on. I'm going to work through these methodically. We will go to item 11.2. Oh, we just did that. 11.2 is the budget. Moving to 11.3, which is a resolution in your pocket, resolution 202306, increasing the taxing district's regular levy from what was levied the previous year.
Isn't that a tongue twister?
Yeah, that is, that is a tongue twister. This essentially says yes, we want our 1%.
Correct.
Yes.
And it's, it's an oddly worded resolution.
Yes.
But it's worded in the way that the county would prefer us to word the resolution, and this has been reviewed by the county already, and they approve how we have stated it here.
Yes.
And yes, we want the money.
So I'm going to read the easier portion of this. The resolution increases the regular property tax levy by the maximum amount allowed by state law, exclusive of any new construction increases in the value of state-assessed property, any annexation improvements to property, newly contracted wind turbines and refunds. So essentially, so I will take a motion to approve resolution 202306.
I saw a move.
And the second?
Second.
Anybody have any further comments, questions, considerations? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, okay. Similarly, we have item 11.4, the tax levy certification, which then allows, it's a motion from the Board of Trustees to certify. So now we're certifying what we just passed, the maximum levy allowed by law for library services, but basically it authorizes Jason, as our library director, to sign the letter of certification. So it's related to the resolution, but another formal act required by the county. I'll take a motion to approve this tax levy certification.
I saw a move again.
Second.
You guys are busy down there. Having a motion, is there, are there any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
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 And finally, this is really related to the ability to do an electronic funds transfer. So this is resolution 202307, authorization for Kitsap County Rural Library District, the DBA, Kitsap Regional Library, to direct the Kitsap County Treasurer's Office to conduct an electronic fund transfer from the Kitsap Regional Library General Fund to the appropriate Kitsap Regional Library bank accounts. With that, I'll take a motion to approve resolution 202307, authorizing the electronic fund transfers.
I saw a move.
Second.
You could shake it up down there, actually. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approving the motion as made? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is, I'm glad we only do that once a year, actually. With that, we are going to take, our next item is really a very short executive session. I think it will probably just take 10 minutes or so. The trustees will convene to specifically discuss our plan of approach for Jason's performance review, and we'll be back in 10 minutes. Are we ready? We're all here. Going to call us back into public session from the executive session where the trustees spent time discussing the approach to the library director's evaluation for this current operating year. So our last item on the agenda is really a housekeeping item, reflecting our next meeting date of our regular meeting in December. It is December 19th, which is actually not the regular cadence. It's a week earlier than it normally appears on the calendar, given the holidays. And with that, we will close the meeting.